The Tuesday, April 21st, special meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. President? Mrs. Gerber? Here. Mr. Asa?
Here.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly? We'll come back to her. She's here. Looks like she's having technical difficulties. Ms. Pitco?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Miss Leeper?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Ms. Rotelli?
Here.
Superintendent Cummings?
Here.
And we are also joined by our executive directors. I ask you all, and I am the chair, Christine Vitale, I am here. I'm going to ask you all to stand for the pledge and for a moment of silence to just honor those who are on the front lines fighting COVID-19, as well as those who are fighting this virus and those families that have lost loved ones. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everyone. For the public, board members see each other by the door. We apologize that we cannot be locked with you tonight, but we thank you for tuning in. And hopefully, everyone will have good reception for this meeting. I want to, before we start, I just would like to thank the superintendent, all the executive directors, and the staff of the Fairfield Public Schools for your work this past month. You truly rose to the occasion and have provided, in addition to an education for our children, just a sense of stability and a sense of community during a very, very stressful and unprecedented time. So I thank you for that. And thank you to the board and all of our Fairfield Public Schools family. I'd also like to thank our town leadership for just their, all the work that they're doing to keep our community safe during this time. We really are working to keep our community safe. So with that, let's get right down to business. We're going to take up just those business items that were on our agenda for our March 10th meeting. We're going to finish those first, and then we'll get an update on distance learning and the budget. So can I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the pre-K through 12 art curriculum? Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Cummings, do you have any opening comments about this? That anything's changed since our last presentation?
No, no, excuse me, nothing has changed. I again just want to thank the members of the Art Department. Everybody contributed to the curriculum, but certainly those folks who presented at our last board meeting, it really was a terrific presentation. I think they had really spent a lot of time preparing for that, and they did their homework. And I didn't get any, I got one question from board members, which have been answered and distributed this afternoon. I didn't know if there were any others that we want to answer before the vote.
Is any, Ms. Rotelli?
Hi. Yeah, no, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say, you know, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I enjoyed watching that presentation. I thought it was great. I just wanted to give two goes to the staff.
Thank you.
Any additional questions before we go for a vote? Seeing none? All in favor? Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Pitco, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Rotelli. I've got everybody, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Ms. Leeper. All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes, nine zero. Just for the listening public, can you please just say your name prior to speaking when called upon? Moving on, that the Board of Education adopt policies 5145, Civil and Legal Rights and Responsibilities, non-discrimination of students, 5145.3, Students and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and Title II of the American Disabilities Act of 1990, and 5145.4, Non-Discrimination, Title IX. Mrs. Max and Cannelly? Seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Max and Cannelly, do you have any opening comments about this?
Uh, no. This is something brought to us by staff. I've received no questions about it. So as far as I know, it's good to go unless there are any questions at this time.
Do any members of the board have any questions for the Policy Committee? Okay. Seeing none? Favor? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Rotelli. Motion, Ms. Leeper, I got you. All opposed? Seeing none, abstentions, seeing none. Nine zero. Okay, moving on to Superintendent's update. Mr. Cummings, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. And before I begin, I just want to let the board know that right before, right as the meeting was started, Marco's lost power at his house. So he is still trying to pack into the meeting, but right now Chris Brand is acting as backup for us if we need him. So that's why I've been kind of paying attention here, because Marco was texting me to let me know. So I, we asked for questions in advance, and we distributed those questions, and those questions and answers are on the website tonight for the public. Really, I think that, I think the first thing I want to say, and I cannot say this often enough, our teachers have done, the teachers, our administrators, our parent professionals, all of our staff, the food service staff, the IT staff, the central office staff, have just, it's been remarkable, the level of work and commitment that they've demonstrated coming forward in support of the kids and the parents in this. You know, it's an overused word, obviously, at this time, but it truly is unprecedented. And none of us, none of us have experienced with this. And I think that the work of the staff to respond to this and be responsive to the needs of kids has just been remarkable. You know, I would say to you that we are, we, I think there's a growing sense that we're in this for the long haul. There's a growing sense, reading just even the online tonight, there's articles and news stories in many sites talking about the length that this will go, and this could be a recurring event. That's not wonderful to hear, but it tells us that, you know, we have to continue to do the work that we're doing and continue to get better at it. And we're more reliant than ever on the feedback we're getting from our students and our parents and from our staff. And the level of transparency and honesty that we've experienced is crucial to us continuing to improve this work. I think that what we are working on now, or what we're trying to deal with, and as I've said before, is we really are, we're planning as if we're not going to be able to come back this year, because that's the unknown, and it's more important that we plan for the unknown than the known. If we are able to come back in some form or another, and I want to emphasize to everybody again, that that's not a decision we make, that's a decision that the State and Health Department officials will make, and obviously the governor will announce. And then even when we do come back, what restrictions and parameters will be under when we do. We're going to have to live and work with those restrictions and parameters. But we are planning now for scenarios of how we might come back. And I will say to you that I think our number one priority is, has always been the health and welfare of our kids and their families, our staff. But we also have a mission of educating our students, and how we balance those two things going forward is really, I think, our number one question. Particularly if we only have small, open windows in which to do that, whether those small, open windows are limited numbers of contact between the number of students, for example, or staff who can come into a building, and what that might look like. Or we're only able to come back for, say, a month in September before we might have to go out again, how do we take advantage of the time we have? You really do feel like you're running against the clock. And so those are the things that we're really, I think we're all struggling to address. And, you know, fortunately, the very same things that prepared us for this occurrence, who helped us move relatively quickly into distance learning, and have helped us to modify our approach over the last four or five weeks, that level of commitment and collaboration from the staff is going to be even more crucial now than ever. So I think that, the other thing I would add is, I think all of us can speak to the fact that over the past 10 days or so, the number of people who we know who are ill, or people, people we know who are ill, has only grown. And we've been aware that this was going to be happening, but how we go through this, how we prepare for that, and how we accommodate our staff and when this happens, is really still a question for us. We just have to put people first, and that's what we're committed to doing. But, you know, the depth of how this is going to, how deep this will be is still unknown to us. So we can't get too far ahead of ourselves, but we have to try to get ahead of ourselves, and that's part of the struggle. And I apologize for my inarticulateness around this. I think that this is the question that we're all struggling with to answer, and it's very difficult in a business and in, you know, a system that relies on giving people answers to not have them. It's a struggle for all of us. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, to hear your thoughts and comments. And, you know, if I'm, any of the executive directors can lay in with answers as well. I'd appreciate that.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cummings? No one? Mr. Peterson?
Just thinking of asking some questions. First of all, just kudos to everybody. I know we all feel this way, that everything so far has been incredible, the staff, the administration, you know, for the unexpected challenges that we face. I guess, I, you know, I'm curious, I, you know, I know Massachusetts canceled through the end of the year today, and like I, I see that as the most likely possibility going forward. But like, if we do come back, it's difficult for me to imagine, and I understand the value of coming back, but it's difficult for me to imagine we're going to have kind of robust attendance in that, in that case. And in your scenarios, as you're, as you're working these out, are you planning for some kind of hybrid model for people who, you know, voluntarily leave, keep their children at home? Which is, you know, can be a rational decision, depending on how you look at it.
We are, I think, this question is, you know, it's interesting question, a question like that, Mr. Peterson, it almost appears at once from about six different sources on any given morning. Like, it hadn't been a question, and suddenly it's a question, and I think it's a great question. And I think that's one of the things we have to consider. And it also is one of the things that we, we look to the state for some guidance on. So the state has, and the State Department of Education has really done, you know, done a tremendous job dealing with the varieties of 169 different school districts. But I think we'd look for some guidance from the state on that, because, you know, there are existing statutes on attendance and how we're supposed to mark those things, and so there's got to be some corresponding leniency, to your point, that parents have a very good reason not to send the kids to school, and how we're going to accommodate that, and then we as a system gearing up to almost provide two levels of instruction. You know, I think that, and as I said earlier, I think that that very much may be our world for a while. You know, I saw one, one idea was that, you know, on alternating days, different grades would come in. You know, so I think these are just things that we're going to have to start to play out and work out the logistics. But yes, that's something we have to deal with and plan for.
I guess this is a general follow-up comment, really. You kind of alluded to this. I assume that, like, there is some robust discussion going on in the administrators' chat rooms about what consensus is emerging from different states and different, you know, municipalities, how they're handling it, how they're, and are we all plugged into that? And, you know, I guess I would like whatever we do to not differ too much from what other regional school districts are doing. I just, I'm interested to hear what you're thinking along those lines.
We have, we've had, the commissioner has almost, it's been almost weekly, has a phone call with the superintendents. The Southern Fairfield County Association of Superintendents has met, I think, three times since we've been in closure, addressing issues like the question regarding and exams and those types of things. Basically sharing ideas, collaborating on possibilities. You know, and that's a very diverse group in itself, if you think about it, you know, from Stratford all the way down to Greenwich. There's a lot of different varieties in the towns that we're servicing, so it's originally this discussion. And Fairfield has other elements that some of those towns share, so it's good for us to be part of that. I think there's very much a desire among the superintendents, and certainly from the commissioner's point of view, to have consistency as much as possible across the districts. Their work with the public and private universities in state, for example, to take the pass/fail, you know, option as acceptable to all the universities within the state, is then just crucial to giving every district some sigh of relief around that. So I think that that work is necessary and will continue, and it just, it just helps us in decision-making.
Ms. Pitco, unfortunately, her power is out at her house. She has lost her Wi-Fi, so she is no longer in the meeting. Hopefully, she will be able to join us shortly, but for the record, she is off as of 7:53. Ms. Jacobson, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, hi, Jen Jacobson speaking. Thanks, Mike, for the update. And again, I'll echo everyone's appreciation and gratitude on the huge lift that everyone's been doing. Just a couple of follow-ups to your comments. First, in the discussions around your, with leadership in other areas, has there, or the commissioner, has there been any discussion on summer or earlier start times for next year at all?
No, no, I think, in fact, I think it was the last phone conversation, which is two weeks ago now. We didn't meet last week. I think summer is very much up in the air for them as well. So, you know, going back to our own planning, when we talk about ESY or our credit recovery program, what that might look like for us is still, we're only playing so much, I guess. So the commissioner is, is not making a call on that yet at all.
Okay. And then just, you had mentioned you were, how important feedback was by staff and families and students. And I know seniors had gotten a survey at both Ward and Ludlow. Not sure when those results are coming out. But just could you speak to the public maybe on mechanisms for them to be providing any feedback? Is that just through an email? Do we have some sort of form online? Or if students want to send information, is there any kind of centralized system to do that or process?
No, there isn't a centralized system at this plan. I think primarily it's come through email. I kind of get the big picture emails from parents, you know, the question about graduation or grading or something like that. I think that the principals are getting more of the communications directly about whether there's technological issues with the students or whether there's concerns about instruction or there's too much or not enough. If I get any of those, I direct them back to the building where possible. The CES is putting together a parent's survey that, that they will distribute to the local superintendents that we can take advantage of and modify if we wish. And I'd be interested in doing that, particularly because I think now we are in this long haul of things, and that changes perspective. So I look forward to getting that from them, and we were going to review that and put that out.
Did they have any plans by any chance to include a student survey?
I don't know if they did or not. I have heard from a few students. I know that the headmasters and the middle school principals have heard from students. But we haven't formally collected that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
Um, hi, just Jen Max and Cannelly. Just a couple of questions to follow up on others that I sent in. Regarding the summer school credit recovery, I know that's, that's the plan right now, but I thought that the high school course offerings also offered opportunities to students who are looking to advance. For example, if a student was going to jump into AP Chemistry as a sophomore, as opposed to just honors chemistry, they would, there was summer coursework for that. When we're talking about students who are looking to double accelerate in math heading into middle school, there was curriculum for that. So how would those needs be met now?
Well, I, it's interesting, because after we submitted the answers back out to you, we had a further conversation with the high school administration today. And I think one of the things, first of all, those courses have run when there's enough, it's kind of like, are we going to, similar to continuing yet, are we going to make money on them or not? You know, if they're going to be, if they're going to be a loss if we don't run those courses. But given the opportunities we have now, and some of the things that we're learning with this current situation with distance learning, we think that we might be able to offer a broader array of those things. So that's just, that conversation is just now beginning, and it's one of the things we're going to have to look at. But I think people are far more comfortable with distance learning. You know, one of the issues with summer school, as Mr. Hass has talked about today, one of the issues with summer school has been, well, it runs these weeks and families go away, but now with what we've learned with summer school, kids could still go away and be in class. So we're going to look at how we might be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. And then regarding grading, because I have certainly gotten a couple of questions about, you know, what's happening with that. What do you see as being the timeline for informing parents and families and staff? Because I assume there's impact on staff as well when they're, when it comes to student motivation or anything else. Do you have a timeline in mind for that?
We met on that today, and I think that we'd be aiming for something like the middle of May. I think one of the things that we're concerned about, you just mentioned, is the idea of, of keeping, taking motivation away from students, particularly seniors who might already be less motivated. But I think that what we're really trying to strike, and I, you know, I hope I've communicated it, is that we're probably going to need at least a couple of solutions. I've heard very clearly from many parents that they want to keep the letter grades, and I understand why, and we, we respect very much that desire. What we didn't hear from were the families that would have concerns about grades. But we know that those families exist. We know that those students exist, because they're communicating through our social workers and school psychologists and deans about struggles that they're having. So what that might look like, if it's strictly a pass/fail, or if it takes some other, you know, I think we were talking today, somebody shared with us that Hopkins and New Haven, for example, was giving students the option of, they could either take their third quarter grade as their yearly grade, what it looked like at the end of the third quarter, or they could take their fourth, depending on how their fourth marking period went. I think, I think there's a number of ways to approach this problem that we've got to explore. So I would hope that by mid-May, we'll be able to make that call and get that out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rotelli?
Thanks, Christine. Bonnie Rotelli, through the chair to Mr. Mancusi. I received your update on PPTs will be resuming. Could you give a little update to the public and the board on how that will go? And is there, is there a priority with PPTs?
Sure. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director, Special Education. We actually had a, as you saw in the update, we're coming, we want to come out by the end of the week with some guidance in terms of the prioritization of resuming PPTs. And we're looking at, obviously, PPTs that should have happened already with a priority of first to three transitions, age out, so we can set students up for the next step after leaving public school, and transition PPTs, and other PPTs where there is a compelling reason for the PPT to convene. Fortunately, I was informed today that the state likely is going to come out with district guidance on resuming PPTs. It sounds like a lot, like I just explained, but we're looking to resume PPTs by May 1st.
Great, thank you.
And we're scheduling some prior to that based on compelling reasons that families have for the need to go to a PPT.
Any additional questions? I have, Mr. Cummings, is there anything that is lacking, just in terms of technology? Are you running into any problems, anything additional support that is not in place, that the board can help with, or that we need to be aware of?
I think that the issues that we have are not on the instructional side, the technology side. I think they're really on the issues of getting access to students and students' ability to access education. I think that those are the things that we're looking at. I know, I had a conversation yesterday with Mr. Smolow, the president of the FBA, and FBA is looking at ways to support students financially, families that are struggling. And I've tried to link him up with some of the support services that are already happening in town, for example, so that efforts are coordinated. I think that's really where we're most concerned. We can work our way through the ideas of, say, what a final exam is going to look like, or how that's going to look different than it has in the past. We can look at ways of addressing the length of the instructional day, you know, we've had, we've done that already. We may have to do that again. But that, the unknown, the things that are happening in houses that we can't get access to, is, I think, the greatest concern.
And are students able to reach to their school counselors? Do they know how to access school staff aside from their teachers if they need additional support?
They do. I would say that they do, but we're not, we're making the phone calls. We're not waiting for the phone calls. So I think, you know, I think our frontline spokesman has really been the psych, school psychologists and social workers. Yeah, and we know, yeah, well, let me just say one thing, Rob. I think that, I know that they're working weekends to reach kids. I think that there's a, there's a great concern on that part. So, Rob?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but yeah, if I could just hop on that. We are monitoring students' engagement and families' engagement throughout this whole process. And there is, there is additional outreach when there are concerns, and this is happening daily.
Thank you. Ms. Leeper? Hello, Mrs. Gerber?
Muted. An advantage of reduced-price meals?
Jen, can you just repeat? You are muted on the beginning.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, guys. Jen Leeper, I was wondering if you're similarly tracking students who are eligible for free for reduced-price meals but have not yet shown up to pick up any meals? Or if you have any students in that category?
We do, we probably do. I would say that because the families can access the meal delivery services in Bridgeport, or for that matter, any town, we can't say that they, we can't say what they're getting, that they're not getting a meal someplace else. being accessible and Bridgeport also through their services having dinners, our numbers dropped a little bit. They've kind of risen back up. But we are not, we are not serving as many meals as we have students available, as we have students who qualify for free and reduced ones. I'll say it that way.
Are school workers reaching out to any of those families or is it not really something they're tracking?
Well, reaching out, we're not like taking names at the food service. I mean, we're not really supposed to. So it's difficult to do that. I think, I think it's part of the communication about students accessing, excuse me, accessing school services, being in class or not being in class. I think those are the parts of the conversation that come up.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
I just want to say one more thing. I think one of the things that we're curious about is, do we have students who are no longer living in town because of, you know, childcare issues? So have they gone, moved in with grandparents or aunts and uncles, people who can provide, provide for their schooling in a sense during the day because both of their parents and here might have to work? So that's, that's one of the other things that I think is happening.
Okay. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, Jessica Gerber, I don't have any questions, just a couple of informational things. I just got a message from Marco saying he's back on again, so I just wanted to let everyone know. And then also just in terms of information, I was going to ask if the question that the board members had asked that were responded to by Mr. Cummings and his staff were going to be posted. And I just checked and they already are posted, which means that the public who has questions that can go to where the agenda posted and the questions that were asked by board members the past few days that were sent to us today are now online as well. So that's just an informational thing. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of the executive directors, to Mr. Cummings, to all of the staff. You know, this has been an incredibly difficult time for everyone, for staff, for families, for everyone. But really, the amount of time and effort and energy that our staff have put into helping our families, you know, kind of get on board with all of this, I just, you can't really measure it. So thank you so much.
Anybody else? Distance learning has done an ordeal with our school calendar a little bit. So we have a number of changes to make. We are going to start with, we were supposed to have April 28th off from school because there was supposed to be the Connecticut presidential primary. That is no longer happening. That primary is now happening on August 11th. So we are going to reclaim that day. So to put the motion on the table with the Board of Education amend the 2019-2020 Board of Education Student Calendar and convert Tuesday, April 28th, 2020 to a regular school day and establish Monday, May 11th, 2020 as a no-school day to meet all contractual obligations. Does that have a motion? Mrs. Jacobson, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Cummings, do you have anything to add to why we have these motions on the table?
No, I think the motion speaks for itself.
Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Yeah, so thank you for getting back to my calendar question regarding those two now non-snow days. But a different question is that how does this date work? Well, first of all, why is May 11th preferable to April 28th at this point? Because now that makes that a three-day week and instead we could have had a series of four-day weeks. So just wondering. And then secondly, how does that impact AP exams? If kids are supposed to be taking exams that day and now it's theoretically a no-school day and also AP prep? So three different questions.
April, the, I'll get you with the April 28th. We try to avoid taking a day and just, again, the reason we're talking about this is because that April 28th day was a day off from school for the, for the teachers. And therefore, by taking it out of the calendar, we, we have to be careful that we don't exceed the teacher number of contractual days, right? So we have to make up for that day someplace else in the calendar. One of the things that we were working on, particularly with the high school administration, was appropriately balancing the days of even an odd number of days for, to get ready for the end of the year. And we also were trying to avoid taking days prior to AP exams. April 28th would have, would have been a day off, you know, obviously before the exams, which actually begin on May 11th. May 11th is an AP exam day. We have physics exams on that day and we have, AP GOV is on that day. There's about 140, 150 students at both high schools that would be impacted by that. They would still take exams on that day, so it really isn't a day off for them. Although the exam, as you know now, is a 45-minute exam. They're in the late afternoon and we were likely going to follow our current practice of giving students off from that day anyway to make sure that they were prepared for the exams. So I'm sure they, they won't be happy if their younger brothers and sisters, older brothers and sisters have the day off, but they're taking, they're taking essentially a 45-minute open book exam sometime that afternoon. They take place after, I believe, 11:00 or 10:00 or 12:00. And so, yeah, and the other thing was, the idea of even pushing it back, if there's any likelihood that we could be returning to school after May 20th, the worry would be that once we're back, I think everybody would, if we're back, everybody would want every possible day together with students. And so going after May 20th didn't seem like a good idea. So there was a very narrow window in which to pick the day.
And I would also just like to add, Mrs. Max and Canelli, just in, and I'm talking about this, April 28th, just some of the feedback we had gotten about eliminating spring break. I had some concerns about having another full day off of school, you know, now the kids are getting back in the groove of things. And May 11th, if, if we end up not opening again, returning kids to school buildings, May 11th seemed that it was sort of in the halfway point from when we returned to break and when the last day of school would be. Any additional questions on this motion? Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, thanks. Just on this whole series of discussions on the calendar, if this all goes through as presented here tonight, Mr. Cummings, how many instructional dates will Fairfield end up with? Do you have?
We will have 175. So it will be seven less than the 182.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Gerber, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Rattelli, Ms. Zicker, Ms. Max and Canelli, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Fattali. Motion passed. All opposed? Sentence, none. Motion passes 9-0.
8-0.
8-0. I forgot Tricia wasn't there, sorry. 8-0. Thank you, Mrs. Gerber, for the correction. Okay, moving on, full day Friday, P-Day, PD days in May. Recommended motion is the Board of Education amend the 2019-2020 student calendar and convert Tuesday, May 26th to a regular school day and establish the following dates as full day Friday professional development dates with new school for students, May 1st, May 15th, and May 29th. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Mr. Cummings, would you like to give a little intro on this?
Sure. One of the questions that was asked prior to tonight's meeting and is answered, as Ms. Gerber said, is online, but I just want to emphasize why we would need these PD days. First of all, the May 26th day, which now we're proposing becomes May 29th, was already in the school calendar. We've asked for that day the last couple of years because it's really a great opportunity for staff to reflect on the year and to plan essentially for the next year. It's kind of the markation point for planning the school improvement plan that takes place over the summer and is supported in Board of Education funding as well. I think that conversation has to happen every year. It's going to be very, it absolutely has to happen this year, how this, how this distance learning is going to impact and how we're going to have to plan ahead. But as I mentioned in the response to that question, other things that are in place and needed, we are still continuing to make curriculum adjustments in light of what happens with expectations around student learning during distance learning. And part of that is developing what the end-of-course assessments might look like, some type of program assessment that we have to, we are putting in place and for time for teachers to collaborate on that. We still have need for collaboration around lesson planning and we have work to do around student assessment. I think, as I mentioned at the beginning tonight, our greatest concern is, let me reorder that, our greatest concern right now is where we are. But when students come back, our great concern will be getting a quick analysis of where they are and what we need to do to support them. We are doing a great job, I think, with the students who currently qualify for interventions and support services, but I don't think any of us would make an argument that distance learning is a substitute for in-person learning. And my other concern is students who, not my just concern, I think it's all of our concern, students who previously might have been on track but have they fallen off track? And so we're going to have to measure that. So we have a lot of planning to do around that. And after I put this together, Mr. Arnon also mentioned the need that we have at the elementary level for building class lists and doing articulation around, you know, as kids move up from the level. So there's quite a number of needs that we have that require staff collaboration and planning together, and those are the reasons for the three days.
Any questions to Mr. Cummings? Mrs. Max and Canelli?
Thank you. So just a couple of questions. I know that, you know, there was talk of reading and math assessments, you know, just trying to gauge how students are doing. But what about outright content not being hit and how that's going to affect the subsequent years? Obviously, I'm hoping that, again, speaking to the high school level, well, and middle school, that somehow there's some oversight that, to make sure that everybody is horizontally remaining aligned because one teacher may be grappling a little bit, one student grappling with another a little bit, you know, better, differently, different placing is radically going to impact classes in September. So I guess I was wondering if you could speak to that oversight? And then for strength of content not being hit, how is that going to be handled? And again, I know that's a huge question and there's a lot that's going to happen in the next month, but obviously I see this PD factoring into that.
Yeah, I think that, I think, you know, your point about the level of consistency and, you know, as students are in certain teachers' classroom, whether it's elementary or in a sixth grade math class and then they all mix together when they go to seventh grade, I think those are part of the reason we've asked for the professional learning days in the past and ask going forward. Because this, these really are the only opportunities that teachers have to, to kind of measure their progress against each other and to make sure they're on the same page. And that's why we wanted to have a consistent expectation for the end-of-year exam or project or whatever that thing is so that we're able to use that for information for, for planning purposes for next year. I think from the skill and content point of view, we're going to have to begin the year, whenever, whenever we have the opportunity to get kids again, get together and really plan out how we can, where the learning gaps are. There are certain classes, certain content areas that I think are going to be greater, more greatly impacted by this than others. I think math, world language, those are the two that just immediately jump to my mind are where that day after day buildup of skills and knowledge is so important to, you know, to the next day. I think that in courses like social studies where the idea of, the questioning can be organized around themes, we can still extrapolate students' understanding of the big picture type issues. But if you were to have a two-year history course and you missed the end of the last unit, for example, in the previous year and you move into the next year, how can we consolidate that information because it's needed to begin the next year? And so we're going to have to do some compression, I think, to make up for lost time. I just don't think that we're going to be able to, we're not going to add days to the school year next year. And so I think that that's one of the things we're going to have to do is make some curricular adjustments during the course of either the end of this year or over the course of the summer to be ready for that.
And you don't see that there, and I'm not suggesting, I just didn't know if it was part of the conversation, of having any form of carefully created summer work be used as a means of meeting that deficit?
I think that that's a possibility. I think that that's certainly within the options of things we can do. You know, I had a conversation, you know, this is just a thought, but what, what type of current assessments available online can we give to students as part of this kind of measurement of where they are and what they know and are able to do? I think we have to, I think each subject area presents its own solutions and its own problems. And we're going to have to work within those, those parameters to move forward. You know, again, as I said earlier, we really are planning that we won't come back. So, because it's just easier to plan that way. And I think that it's, part of that planning is to think about, well, if we don't have the opportunity to have these kids in front of us, how can we support them for, not only this year and understand where they are, but how can that information guide instruction to begin the next year? And what might we be able to do over the summer to continue the learning and how that might look?
Okay, thank you. And then just last two quick questions. The idea of that horizontal line, are those meetings or conversations that are being led by the department leaders for that across the subjects?
Our program director is in the curriculum liaison, yes.
Okay. And then also, are these Fridays, are they entirely devoted to professional development or are there any opportunities there for student conferencing? You know, with Google?
For what type of conferencing?
Student conferencing. If that's ever a time that teachers are using that to have conferences, either small group or individual, or is that not what that day is ever used for, solely for development?
That's a great question. I had a question from one of the teachers to say, you know, going back to the AP issue, could I use time on that day to be available to kids to help them get ready for AP? And I think that, you know, I mean, our emphasis is that we have to put student learnings first in the best of circumstances. So I think, and I recognize that they want their students and need their students to do well on these exams. So that, we're going to put those types of things on the tables for teachers because I think we have to be open to the different, the different parts of our system population need to have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Mike. Yeah, Jen Jacobson, just to follow up on that, at least at the high school level and the middle school level, those opportunities that we previously had for after-school extra help and the writing conferences and all of those opportunities that students previously had, how is that happening now?
I think teachers are doing it on the times when they're not teaching. We build time in the day for teachers to be available kind of off, well, everybody's always online, but not part of their instructional day or they're part of their instructional hours, that they're able to be with students on other times during their, during the day, as it were.
Okay, so extra help and writing conferences and all those are still opportunities that students know are still available to them should they need it?
That's right. And I would encourage, anybody who needs support should be in contact with their teacher for that support.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I will be supporting this motion. In addition to wanting to give teachers the time they need for professional development, I also think that some families could also use the time just to, I know that some families that maybe have some challenges at home or are struggling with distance learning, it provides an opportunity for them to regroup a little bit. Also, since we do not know if we're going to be facing second waves of this, I think that taking the time now to prepare for the future and learn from this and grow from it, hopefully we'll never have to do this again, but this is an opportunity and I think we should try to make the most of it. So seeing no other hands up, let's go for a vote, all in favor? we'll never have to do this again, but this is an opportunity, and I think we should try to make the most of it. So seeing no other hands up, let's go for a vote, all in favor. Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. Leeper, Mrs. McNally, Mr. Asa, myself, Mrs. Vitale, all opposed, seeing none, abstentions, seeing none, motion passes Last day of school for students. The Board of Education established Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, as the last day of school for students. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. Mr. Cummings, can you just give a background of why we don't have to worry about some snow days and just our instructional days per the executive orders that had been passed down in the A.D.s?
Yes. One of the very first things that the commissioner and governor worked on was, once we were in school closure, once all of the state was in school closure, was an awareness that we were gonna be backing up really quickly to the end of June, and it would become impossible to make up the days that had some, many districts lost, as they transitioned from in-school to distance learning. So they quickly, relatively quickly made it, the decision, executive order decision, that the 180-day rule was suspended essentially for this year, and that the day that was your last day of school on, on the day that you went into distance learning could remain your last day of school into distance learning. So our last day on, when we went into distance learning, our first day of distance learning was, our first day out of school was March 13th. At that point, our last day was June 17th, we had only had one snow day. We were allowed to keep that date as the last day.
And just for clarification, we couldn't go earlier. We still have, June 17th needs to be our last day.
Yep. That, thank you. There were some districts, I think, who thought if they gave up April vacation, they could get out five days earlier. The commissioner, I don't think, anticipated that as a, as a move, and when he found out that that was happening, he pretty quickly stepped in and said, no, 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 you, you can't subtract from your end day. You keep your end day, but you can't make it better than it was before. So we couldn't have gotten out earlier if we had tried.
Thank you. Any, Mrs. McNally?
Are you serious?
I am.
Hypothetical districts that gave up their April break are not getting out any earlier?
That's right. Yeah, they were not allowed to. He pretty quickly, you know, kind of when he found out about it, he, I think he, he didn't realize what would happen, and he pretty quickly got out and said, no, you're not doing that.
Well, thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
I did actually have one other question, I forgot to ask it on the, the previous one. A side note, but knowing that spring athletics are being lost and, you know, we do have some, you know, serious athletes in, in the district, this isn't quite on the topic of June 17th, but I was wondering if our A.D.s are playing any role in getting information out to those athletes as the picture is changing with information from the NCAA? In terms of SAT, in terms of pass fail, in terms, you know, all of those things that can impact the student's eligibility? I was wondering if the A.D.s are doing anything to, you know, specifically target the athletes or go through the coaches or anything like that?
I'm gonna have to check on that for you. I know that one of the most recent communications from the state was around NCAA eligibility, but I'll check to see who's actually communicating that to the kids.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or comments about the last day of school? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Rotelli, Mrs. McNally, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, all opposed? Mrs. Leeper, do you have a question? All opposed?
She's mute.
Oh, she mute? Mrs. Leeper, you were, you were mute, I think. Are you in favor?
No, no questions.
Okay.
What, did it look like I still had my hand up or something?
It did. All opposed? Abstentions, seeing none, motion passes eight zero.
Yeah, I raised my hand, could you not see?
Well, I did, but then you were kind of frozen. I wasn't sure if you were, what, what, when you raised your hand for? Okay, moving on, approval of the graduation date. The Board of Education approved Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, as the date of graduation for Fairfield Level High School and Fairfield Ward High School. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. Graduation is typically the last day of school. Mr. Cummings, do you have anything to add to the graduation date?
No, I, well, yeah, I do. I would just, again, this is a hope for, you know, I will tell you that if, the commissioner is very passionate about his work, the thing that I found that the commissioner to be most passionate about in the last few weeks and the last few phone calls is a commitment to do something for our senior class this year in Connecticut. Of what that is, we don't know. And I, the questions I've gotten from parents and from board members and staff, I, I will answer here for everybody. We will follow the guidelines we're given by the state and town health officials. We can't break the rules, we can't break the law. But if there's some opportunity in some way to gather students, I think that there's a real commitment on the part of our staff to do that. We want to honor the seniors. How that might look, what it might look like, all those details would still have to be figured out, obviously, with the restrictions that were given at the time. But I think by selecting the June 17th date as the graduation, that well may be the date that winds up on the diploma, but the actual event may take place some other date, quite honestly. I think that that's just one of the things we have to, we have to consider and, and, you know, as we work for what's best for the kids.
I have been on board chair conference calls since the closure. This is something that board chairs are, are talking about, trying to get ideas if we can't hold an in-person graduation. So there is a lot of discussion about this. There is a real commitment to giving these seniors the recognition that they so deserve. What that looks like is still obviously in the works. Getting a student voice to this process, I think, is important. Mr. Cummings, I believe a survey went out to students on this?
That's right, yes.
Have the results been tabulated yet?
No, I haven't seen them. I will tell you that they're, just in conversation with both head masters, the, the student response is that they want something, they just don't even want any virtual, they, they really want to be together.
Which is absolutely understandable. Questions about this? Ms. Jacobson, did you have your hand up?
You asked the question that I had asked, or on, asking, right? So you, you, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else have a question about graduation? And I think I speak for everyone that our hearts really do go out to our senior class. They work so hard, and this is, we all remember, I think, being a high school senior and what a special time this is, and, you know, I feel for them, and I feel for their families and for their parents, and I know we have a couple of parents of seniors on this board. We feel for you. And I think that there's a real commitment to, to do something special for these kids. So if there's anything, you know, if there's any way that the board can help or engage the community in doing something for these kids, if they cannot be together on June 17th, if this motion passes, please let us know.
Will do.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor for the approval of the graduation date for June 17th? Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. McNally, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Rotelli, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Leeper, your hand up? Mrs. Leeper, all opposed, seeing none, abstentions, seeing none, motion passes eight zero. Okay, moving along to the budget update. You have all gotten a copy of the year-end projections. This was also given to the Board of Finance, as well as a copy of some of the questions that were, were given to the Board of Finance. Just to recap, you know, a lot has changed since we adopted our budget at the end of January. The Board of Selectmen has voted back at the beginning of March. At that time, our budget was reduced by $1.4 million. So that is where we are right now. I'm gonna give it to Mr. Cummings right now, just to give any, you know, an update, and Ms. Moncel, any other information that you have on where we are, you know, I'm gonna take that back. Why don't we start with going through the year-end projections as a starting point? I know that a lot of people have questions about that, just to find out where we are, what disclosure, how it's impacting the finances. There are some savings, but there are also some unexpected costs that are probably coming our way. And Mr. Cummings, the floor is yours.
Okay, I can go through this, let me kind of go big picture, and then if there's specific questions around some of the items, and I know there were some in the, again, in the questions that were answered online tonight. What we are looking at right now is, if you're looking at that spreadsheet, we're looking at around two, two and a half million dollars in savings, potential savings. The Board of Finance has asked us to break this out in two different ways. You know, what, what are, what are savings outside from COVID, and what are savings as a result of COVID? So for example, and one of the questions dealt with this issue, there's a significant amount of savings in salary, because we, we are, we have not filled every position, we had some staff leave in the middle of the year, and, oh, you should, let me be, put more clear on that. We have filled every position we've needed, but we've not filled every budgeted position. So that is not a COVID-related savings, for example. When we get down to things like substitutes, I will tell you that our substitute number is more COVID-related, because our teachers are not taking time out right now. We don't have yet figures on utilities, we're still waiting for bills there, but savings there will be COVID-related, because the schools obviously are, and locations are closed. So that's what the Board of Finance has asked us to do, and Ms. Moncel is working with the executive directors to break that out. Excuse me, another COVID-related savings, for example, would be the money right now that you're seeing in instructional supplies, things that we know we're not able to do now, because we're not in school and we don't need. So that's one way to look at this, and we'll be providing it by the end of this week, another, a breakout of this spreadsheet, looking at it in those two perspectives. The other thing I would say is, one of the things we're also looking at is, and we're developing for the, for the Board of Education's view, but also for the Board of Finance and ultimately the RTM, is what, what's gonna change in our budget ask for 2021? So one of the questions I brought up, or one of the thoughts I brought up, was the issue of, do we, should we be looking at going one-to-one with Chromebooks in grades three, four, and five? That's just an idea we have, and we've not made a move on that yet. That would come at a cost of about $254,000, but that's just something we're now considering, because we've seen, our teachers have spent a lot of time developing lessons that require the use of technology, and they've developed some really good lessons. Do we want to take that back out of their hands when, when ultimately we return to school? Are there maintenance costs that we can now take on, given the closure, that we can get a head start on, that we had not anticipated if school had been in session? So these are all the types of things that, another way to look at this is, how might we use some of this money now or in the 2021 budget to, to best address changing needs? So I don't know if there's questions that any of myself or the executive directors can answer.
And I'd like just to add on that, we've had, you know, a lot has changed in the last month, with the economy on a, at a standstill right now. There is understandably a lot of taxpayer distress, people's financial situations have changed, people are, you know, people are losing jobs or furloughed, you know, just a lot of uncertainty right now. And a question has been asked of me and of the board, are we reconsidering the amount of our increase? I don't know if you've watched the Board of Finance meeting, but my response was that our request has not, has not changed, in part because the need has not changed. If anything, the need might be changing, but we still have a responsibility to educate 9,600-odd students next year. That was my answer, but I do invite just to the board's feedback on that. The budget right now is enhanced to Board of Finance, I do not envy that at all right now, because they had a budget that was built during a different time. You know, they have been, they've asked if there's, as they're looking at ways of reducing both the town sign, and I will be honest, and I think we all know that reductions are coming, the 1.4 that we saw at the Board of Selectmen level, under different circumstances, I would have been arguing for that money back. I did not argue for that money back when I were before the Board of Finance, understanding that, you know, the difficult circumstances we are in. So it appreciates some feedback from the board on that. I think other town bodies are also looking to us for guidance. I don't think that there is any, you know, as a town, we have invested a lot in our, in our school district, we have, the town has a lot of pride in it, education is important, our town leadership is very appreciative of the work that the school district is doing, but it, there are some challenges that we are working together to try to, to address. So with that, I will take it to you for questions, Mr. Asa.
Yes, just related to the COVID, non-COVID related expenses, I see where you're coming from on the salaries, but just to clarify, could we not really say that that is COVID-related? Because if we weren't in this crisis, would we not be filling those positions this fiscal year?
I would, I'm gonna ask Doreen and Colleen to weigh in. Off the top, well, let me, let me stop. I don't know if Doreen and Colleen want to answer that.
We were, you guys might remember, hi, this is Colleen, UCM, the Executive Director of Personnel and Legal Services. You guys might remember that we were under budget, I mean, we were underfilling our positions at the beginning of this year, and that saved us, because we had around three FTE that were empty for certified staff, that saved us around $300,000. So a good chunk of that is positions that, it's not COVID-related, because we really weren't going to fill those positions for this year, because we were able to staff appropriately without doing so. Doreen, you can jump in to correct me if I'm wrong?
Nope, you're absolutely correct. We do have a certain number of vacancies, a small amount of vacancies, that we're just not able to fill because of the situation, because, you know, for instance, a technology position, you know, we're not going through the interview and hiring process right now, so there's also that.
Okay, so are we going to break out for the Board of Finance any of the salary, or we're saying all of it is non-COVID related?
We're working on that currently. We're gonna try our best to break it out. I would say the subs are definitely COVID-related, but the other, you know, quantifying which positions are vacant because of the process not being followed or some other situation is, is gonna be something we'll have to work on with HR.
Thank you.
In terms of staffing, can you provide just a little clarification in terms of the CARE Act and some of the executive orders that came down to school districts, just in terms of keeping school employees on staff, if at all possible?
I can do that, I think. Essentially, the CARES Act and it, and its interpretation by our, our governor, has been that pretty much everybody who was working prior to closure remains on the payroll during closure. So that wasn't clear at the very beginning of this, but that became more clear once the governor's executive orders began. And so, you know, our, for our employees... And so, um, you know, our, for our employees, um, you know, the paraprofessionals, the lunch aides, the part-time clerical staff, um, that really became an expectation that, that shifted over time from, um, you, you may or may not have to pay them to, you should be paying them. And so that's really what we've done, um, pretty much from the beginning. We kept everybody on salary for the first two weeks, and then once that became more clear, um, that we needed to, um, to continue to keep people on, um, we've defined work expectations for each of those groups in turn.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson, your hand up.
Um, a couple of things, um, the, also that provision also extends to subcontractors, vendors, and transportation, generally speaking, with some little noviances, so just wanted to make that point, or if you wanted to speak to that as well, possibly?
Sure.
Correct?
Yeah, you are right, and one of the things that we're working with and, um, right now in negotiation with is the transportation contractors, the two, uh, transportation contractors. Um, again, this, this was a murky picture that has become more clear in time, uh, and now, essentially what we've been asked to do is negotiate, each of the districts has been asked to negotiate with their transportation providers around what that looks like, uh, and so we're in the process of doing that. There, there should be, um, some COVID-related savings around transportation nonetheless, when this is all said and done.
Ms. Jacobson, follow up?
Um, yes, are, are we talking about this whole balance sheet right now, or you just want to stick to salaries at the moment?
No. Um, do, any more questions about salaries before we move on? Seeing none, go ahead.
Um, I just, um, wanted to say that I know that the Board of Finance had also possibly wanted this broken down another way, where it was, um, as two savings versus something that's been deferred and it still needs to happen. So in other words, is it a maintenance item that we just can't do right now, but we still have to do it? Is it the tech repairs that still have to get done? It's not act, it might be a savings right now, but it's not, I mean, it doesn't still need to happen.
That's correct.
Speak to that a little bit?
Yes, that, thank you, that, that's what I was trying to say when I, talking about the different perspective, uh, one was the COVID, not COVID, but that is exactly the, another way we need to look at this, is, um, what, what are we putting off right now because we can't do, that we would like to have the money for when the opportunity presents itself to do that work? So whether, as you say, uh, maintenance, it could be the instructional buys, those types of things, um, we want to have those funds when they're available.
Right, so in short, like, those needs don't go away, they're just happening, right?
Or articulate those now.
Okay, and just to be clear, the, um, maintenance, just wanted to get a little color on that, I didn't ask for that, um, specifically in one of my questions that I had submitted, but the, um, two, what is that, 259, um, in maintenance service accounts, could you just give us a little bit of color of what's sitting in that, knowing we have a lot of maintenance needs, so I'm just wondering what's not happening with those dollars?
Sure, uh, Scandalous, Mr. Pop and George, speak to that.
He's on mute. Thanks.
There we go, I'm back. Um, so what exactly is sitting in that? It's not a lot of projects, most of our projects have to go over the summertime, so last summer, this year's budgets would have taken care of that. It's a lot of miscellaneous stuff that either has been postponed, or we can't get vendors at this point to come out and do the actual physical work because they're either shut down or working on limited staff right now. We do have some projects that we're working with the town as well, they get approval on so that we can move forwards with them. There are some larger numbers in there, so that's why we were able to identify some savings in that area.
Okay, um, if there's any chance, I don't know if it's possible, Mike or, or, um, Angeles, if we could just get a breakdown of that number?
That's 259, you said, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
At some point, thank you.
Yep, line 37.
Correct.
And for the CARES Act, just for clarification, in terms of getting reimbursement at some point, um, hopefully, we need to track COVID-related expenses in order to qualify or get any reimbursement back through federal or state funding, correct?
That's correct.
All right, any additional questions?
And we are doing, we are tracking those expenses.
Ms. Jacobson?
Sorry, one last question, um, and just so we, there's no been change in terms of, uh, our state or federal funding for the remainder of fiscal year 20, or going into fiscal year 21 at this point, those are as expected going forward, yes?
That is correct, that's part of the Governor's orders.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Peterson?
I just have a couple of questions on, on utilities, just because I guess that's my thing. Um, so, so as I, as I understand from the Board of Finance presentation, uh, Mr. Pop and George presented the numbers as, as if, um, we were basically copying last year's expenses i- into this year. Um, I, i- if, if that's the case, one question, I, I can't remember whether you answered in the Board of Finance, is, are, are we going to be air conditioning the schools, uh, during the period of time that there's no one there, and is there a possible savings from that?
Uh, no, we're, we've actually shut down the heat at the beginning of March, so we should see some savings on gas on that way, and we have no intentions of turning on the air, air conditioning at this point until we know students will be in the building. Uh, once we get into the full summer, July, August, we will have to fire up the systems, even if there's no one in the building, otherwise we have humidity issues and that brings mold issues, so we will maintain temperatures in the buildings through the summer, but at this point, with the cooler weather, we don't see any reason to be firing those up. We should see electrical savings and gas saving. We did use the projection, for the projections, we did use last year's March, March, April, May projections, because looking at the year past, March, April, May seems to be our lowest, uh, month for utility bills, so, because originally we were going to look at summer months and use that, but they seem to be higher than those three, so that's why we went with those three at this point. We're still working with our electrical provider, see if we can get some faster results with what we are seeing as savings versus what we normally would, especially with the buildings that have the full, uh, solar systems on it and the carports, we're hoping we will see quite a bit of savings there.
I guess just one quick follow-up, are, is, will it be possible to, uh, in your answers, you said you've been looking at invoices from February and, and March, um, will we get, uh, a clearer picture once April invoices come in some point in early May?
We should, definitely.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? This is Max McEnally.
Thank you, um, a few questions sort of all over the place. First of all, um, to, through Mr. Cummings and Mr. Angeles, I assume that the transition out of, into Bridgeport, that that all was able to be completed, so we're not on the hook for any rent or anything like that because the transition was completed?
We are currently working, our maintenance shop is, has been moved to Bridgeport at this point, so we are working out of there. The only thing we have not moved at this point is transportation, uh, that system is ready and able to go up, the only thing that has not been done yet, completed yet, I should say, is the radio system for the buses, and with, like, with the vendor being on shutdown, they're refusing to come out at this point, so that's the only reason they're still working out of their old office. I'm currently sitting in our maintenance department.
Lovely. Um, and what about the, at this point, where are we, and I submitted a question about this, but I'm not sure that it fully addressed, where are we with the fill pile work, in terms of the, all of those spot places around the district that needed to be addressed?
So I reached out when I saw your question to, uh, Ryan Carey, who's been running that for the town side, since the town has taken control over that, basically informing us when they're going to work and what they're trying to do, and I did not hear back from him. I know he's struggling with, uh, distance learning himself with elementary school kids, but I hope to hear back from him, and I can send out an update once we get it.
Okay, but, but he is working from home, so he is full-time on his job, correct?
Correct, yep, and he is in the office a few days, he may not have been in today though, so.
Okay, well, fair enough, since the question was submitted a little bit late. Um, I'd also make the, you know, uh, back up, um, Mrs. Jacobson's request regarding separating, um, savings columns, uh, to Mr. Cummings, I do think that's a, actually a really vital piece of information of what is something, you know, again, outright savings, which it seems like some salary bar versus the, um, premature, well, an early kicking the can down the road, um, that that's, you know, not a real savings. Um, and then, what is the budget schedule? At this point, have you been given a firm, updated budget schedule of what we're working with?
Do you mean dates?
Yes.
Yes, I, I have the Board of Finance date, I believe it's, uh, May 5th, is that a Tuesday?
Yes.
May 5th, that they're going to vote on May 5th.
There was some discussion, I think, at the last meeting though, about pushing that back, they have until the 11th, I believe, to vote, the Board of Finance, before it goes to the RTM. I don't know if a decision was made on that, though. But May 5th, May 5th is the date that we have their voting.
I got a sense that they're, uh, as a board, they're in a couple different, at least a couple different places, so I think for some people, um, perhaps it would satisfy, I think for others it would not.
Okay, and have you been asked by the First Selectwoman's Office, or by the Board of Selectmen, to factor, I mean, obviously, they have, they made the decision before an awful lot was known. Have you received any communication asking you to take a look, a second look at aspects of the budget, or is it solely now with, is, it's only communication from Board of Finance?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jacobson, sorry.
Just, sorry, through you, um, to Mr. Pop and George, just while I have you on the phone, it's not really a question, um, I just wanted to, we do have people going through each of our buildings still, um, just making sure the inside at this time is, are being monitored with, you know, I think about the weather we had today and just, um, keeping an eye on the insides and outsides of our buildings at this time, correct?
Correct, the guys, the custodians are still working in the buildings, they've actually started doing their routine summer cleaning, so that we're ahead in case there is an extended school year possibility and we need more space, so they're jumping ahead on that type of stuff.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Um, Mrs. McEnally, just to get back to your question, feedback from, as I said, from the Board of Finance, is really, as they are working through this budget, they, at least some members have asked us if there's any adjustments that we think that we could make for the budget, um, that they would appreciate the feedback as they're looking to make further adjustments. So if any board members have any thoughts about the budget that has already been adopted, um, it would be helpful to hear that voiced.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Mr. Pop and George, I have, um, one more question about maintenance. Is there anything that we are able, in terms of preparing to go back to school, have you been given any guidance from either the Health Department or from the state, just in terms of additional cleaning that will need to be done? Um, will any of the practices need to change? Do we need to order cleaning supplies? Is there any fear of there being a shortage for some of these materials? And that cleaning is going to be, um, you know, have to stay at a very high, not that we were not keeping our schools clean before, but I could see it possibly changing, being a little more rigorous.
I have to say, I meet with the, uh, EOC Committee three times a week, and, um, don't want to put anyone down, but I have to say that meeting, in these meetings, it's become very clear that out of all the town buildings, I think the schools are maintaining the best. Um, we've actually picked up, and we are now assisting with cleaning the town hall, the Police Department, and the Fire Department on a regular basis to keep them disinfected and clean. Uh, in addition, we're still doing that in our schools, so we basically took the practices that we were doing in the schools, and then they expanded them out to other schools. I think we've been ahead of the game most of the time on this.
Mrs. McEnally, thank you, Mr. Pop and George. Mrs. McEnally?
Uh, just as a follow-up to that, as the policy regarding green cleaning supplies, has that an issue?
The only issue with that, that we've had so far is the, and it's not so much the green cleaning, but the district policy is the non-alcoholic, uh, hand sanitizer is not effective on the COVID, it's got to be a 60% or more by volume alcohol base, so we've switched, currently, we've switched the hand sanitizer that they're using in the buildings, not in the classrooms and everything, but the guys that are working are using some stuff that we had to order that was a little stronger. Other than that, green cleaning does not pertain to chemicals such as disinfectants, because there's no such thing as a green disinfectant, so they don't fall under that policy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, all right, so that is it for the projections. Mr. Cummings, um, any thoughts, I know, and you can say that, given everything that's changed, um, you'll need to relook at this, but for the 1.4 million dollar cut that we've already received through, from the Board of Selectmen vote, um, any recommendations on how we might approach that?
Um, well, I will tell you, I think that we're, uh, we are looking at, uh, some instructional supplies, uh, we're looking at the potentiality for, um, is there, is there some space for some staffing reduction without impacting program? Um, so as we look at, uh, for example, some retirements that we're getting, is there a way to, um, absorb some of those into existing FTE without replacing staff, uh, uh, with, and, and not impacting, you know, negatively program in some ways? So we're, we're looking at, um, some of the maintenance projects are, that are on the list, we have to look at that. My approach tends to be, uh, um, that if everybody contributes, everybody will, rather than to, to just take from one particular area. Um, but we've begun to identify some potential cuts, and, um, we have to balance that against, ultimately, you know, going back to what was just discussed, is there some money that we're able to, and what we'll discuss in a minute, is there some money that we're able to hold on to, and can that, um, um, soften the blow, as it were, whatever the, whatever the final cut, recommended reduction is.
Okay, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, just following up on that, um, Mr. Cummings, part of the 1.4 million dollar cut originally was due to a better-than-anticipated health insurance number of about $800,000, right?
Yes.
And that, at this point, has not held true, based on this, it's, we're down to a 300, that just, that number didn't hold true, correct?
The, the percentage increase, is that what you're asking?
The dollar value, the dollar value itself.
Yeah, we are concerned, I could have Ms. Moncel speak more eloquently about this than I, but I think that we are concerned that, that, that number is, uh, is not as solid as it once was. Um, you know, so for example, the increase, there's a holdoff on the first increase, on the increase at all for the first quarter of the year. And, um, so essentially what we'll be paying up until October 1 is the existing 1920 rates. After October 1, though, that percentage r- increase that we thought was 6.5% can go up, and how much goes up? Well, uh, Ms. Moncel, do you want to speak, uh, to this better?
Sure, um, I think there's two things that we're talking about, the, the 360, uh, or 340, that's on the current year projection, uh, the shortage there, it was 400,000 at the last quarterly report, that's gone down because of the, um, dependents aging out, age, uh, dependents age 26 used to age out, uh, the month of their 26th birthday, and then it was changed to the end of the calendar year of their 26th birthday, so, um, after December-
So, um, after December, we, we, um, had something like 17 dependents age out, um, and change from family, uh, down to, um, to person. So that's where that savings is. So there's really not, um, there hasn't really been, um, an additional, uh, change in head counts for next year. Um, that's, that's maintained, uh, maintained fairly consistent. Um, the savings for the first, the first three months, holding the, of the rates, is about 400,000, but if the rates go up the remaining nine months for next year, um, as much as 8.5%, um, that wipes out that saving. So that's the change for next year.
Have you been thinking, Moncelle, when we might have a firm number on that?
Um, a firm number on...
On the rate after October?
I don't expect that until just before October. They haven't promised anything, you know, right now.
Um, okay. All right, thank you.
So for now, they're still standing by the 6.25 come October? For, and from Aon, what is their, even though we know it might change, is it still the rate that was given at the Board of Selectmen meeting?
No, the current, no, the current rate, um, maintained, um, holds until the end of, um, September, but they are not committing to the 6.5 and in fact, saying that they expect it to be higher.
Okay. I thought they were still staying by the 6.5.
No.
Okay.
No, they expect it to be higher because of the, the, um, the delay and because of, like, you know, the current situation.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mm-hmm.
So, long story short, the $800,000 that we thought we would be seeing in savings when the budget was reduced at the Board of Selectmen level, we cannot count on that savings. So that will need to be, um, found in our budget. And if something else changes, hopefully not for the worst. Any other questions? Thoughts, comments? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to, um, the discussion on a non-lapsing account. And we spoke about this account, um, in the past before disclosure and this current, um, you know, financial crisis, I'm going to say, that we found ourselves in. There is a statute that will allow Boards of Education to keep up to 2% of excess of the surplus at the end of the fiscal year per Board of Finance approval, um, in a non-lapsing account to be used for educational purposes. There have been some discussions with members of the Board of Finance, and it came up at the meeting last week, about establishing an account with the hope of keeping the surplus from this year in the account to be used for unanticipated expenses next year, such as an extended school year, being that an extended school year is not in the 2020 budget or a 2021 budget. So we would need to, we would need to find the funding for that, as well as to, um, move forward some of these projects that are on hold due to the school closure. To move this forward, I wanted to get some feedback, um, from the board and for us to take action on it, to show our support that this is something that we would like to pursue, that we would ask the Board of Finance to pursue, to hopefully set up this account. Um, there would need to be parameters. Other districts that have this typically set up a, an memo of understanding with the Board of Finance or whatever the, the governing body is in their town, just to outline how the money would be spent.
Sorry to interrupt, Christine. I think we just need to put the motion on the table before we have any more discussion.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I just wanted to give it some context, being that we never, we haven't really spoken to it, but, um... Approval of Non-Lapsing Federal Public Schools Account. Recommended Motion. The Board of Education authorizes the Chair and/or Superintendent to request and work in collaboration with the Board of Finance to establish a non-lapsing account in accordance with Stat, through Statute, Section 285, Section 10-248A, per enclosure rate. Motion, Mr. Asa, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Thank you. Back to this discuss, discussion. I apologize for getting ahead of myself. Um, you have the statute there. Just, uh, that's where we are. So appreciate some feedback from the board on this. Um, if you have any questions, you have the language of the statute, um, and we will discuss, um, moving forward. Mrs. Maxicelli filed by Mrs. Gerber.
Um, first, I'm completely in favor of this. Um, however, I just have a question of, what does staff or Board of Finance, and I'm, I say I'm not, I don't think this came up exactly, but what would be the difference between using the savings of this year and advanced purchases by June 30th versus putting it into a non-lapsing account? How, how is, how are those two things perceived differently?
Um, well, so, so certain items could not be purchased, pre-purchased. They would have to be expended in the next fiscal year.
I, well, I mean, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of, let's, you know, pick an easy, a round number. If we go with the 2.5 million and we project that as savings, and let's, just for the sake of a more simple argument, uh, let's pretend that none of that represented kicking the can down the road, that they, that it was legit savings. And, I mean, obviously, this is not something we'd be trying to be sneaky about. We'd be very open with Board of Finance that, so go ahead and cut us X amount and we will cut these items and pre-purchase them. I mean, I have to believe that between the maintenance projects and other things, that that wouldn't be, I mean, I, I have no problem with the non-lapsing account. I just didn't know if one is perceived differently.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I, I'll give you an example of, of, uh, how the non-lapsing account would work. The non-lapsing account would work for expenses that would come up in fiscal year 2021. So for example, an expansion of the ESY program, which we think is necessary, uh, but we did not budget for in 20, we budgeted for an ESY program in 2021, but not the one that we think that we need now. So, um, salaries, which would occur in July and into August, hopefully, if we're able to hold this ESY program, would be, um, something that couldn't be, be pre-purchased. Um, it would have to go, be expended when people actually worked the hours.
Okay, so that's actually an item that isn't even in the budget at all.
Right.
Right. So essentially, you're asking to add to the 3.9 or whatever the, the current, I actually forget, what's the, what is the new percentage now with the Board of Selectmen's cut?
I think it's 3.14. I think if, I remember right, Doreen has it, I, I forget.
2.13 and two...
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're in fact, with what you're describing, we're talking about making a 3.14% request, now a 3.25% request, but we already have the money to pay for it, is what you're saying?
Right. So not everything, not everything, this goes back, it's like, um, you know, another possibility would be going back to the grade 3 through 5 Chromebooks. If we decided to do that, we could do it one of two ways. We can either reappropriate money in what, what is ultimately budgeted for, right? We're going to the board, of course, but saying, we decided not to buy X, we're gonna buy Y instead, Y being the computers. Or we could take, uh, money out of a non-lapsing account for that purchase. I think these are the things that we have to plan ahead and start to balance, uh, as we move forward. It goes back to this idea of this, the spreadsheet and the idea of, um, what within this spreadsheet are things that we're only deferring?
Right.
And, and that we would wanna use some of the non-lapsing for, but are there other things that have since appeared or become necessary as a result of the school, the distance learning and the closure?
Okay. I, it's, it's, well, the point is, I know, I, I did hear that part of the conversation. They certainly seemed very open to the idea. I think they're looking for great specificity from the Board of Ed in terms of what we're thinking, but, um, I thought it was a very good dialogue, so, um, I was just curious about that, how that difference was perceived.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, this might be a question from Mrs. Moncelle, but, um, the non-lapsing account, how does that get accounted for? Does that come up as an addition to our fiscal 21-year budget or, uh, can you just maybe shed some light on how that, from an accounting standpoint, um, gets calculated for, for us?
Sure, we would create a separate fund for it, similar to a grant, um, and, and set it up just like a grant where it would be, um, its own fiscal year, you know, because it would, non-lapsing means, for instance, say, we put 2.5 million dollars in it, but we only spent 2 million next year. It would continue on to a following year. It's non-lapsing. It does, it's not like the general fund where it ends on June 30th. So it would be completely separate from the general fund.
Okay, so this doesn't start getting, this, this doesn't get calculated, in other words, until like our per pupil expenditure and our total gross expenditures of the district and that kind of a thing, does it?
Uh, it would be.
It would be?
Yes. Because all our, all our expenditures, our per pupil expenditure includes all our grants and all our spending, so it includes all of them.
Okay, so then this year, just, I'm just trying to get some idea of how this is all gonna look. So this year, if this goes, moves over, would look like a very big dip somewhat versus next year, just, right?
Correct, correct.
In terms of the accounting of this?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, I think it's just also important to note that, um, you know, the, the purpose of this motion is to give you and Mr. Cummings the authority to, to make this discussion, but by us voting on this, by, by no means does it mean it's, it's officially happening. Um, you know, I think the Board of Finance is gonna have to weigh, um, whether they want to go with a non-lapsing account for the Board of Education, um, if there's enough members on that body that believe, uh, in that, or if they decide to come up with some sort of contingency fund or, or whatnot. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I think it's, I think two things. It's important that we pass this, um, to give the two of you the authorization, but also echoing on what others have said, I think, making sure that when we go to the Board of Finance, that we have those specifics really drilled down. So when we hand them a document, it's very clear what we plan to use this money for and that it is related to, to the COVID or non-COVID, however it is. Um, but I think it's important that we, we do, so going to the, to like, pre-purchasing of Chromebooks, I'm not sure, you know, how this board feels about doing that because that's not something that was necessarily planned for. Um, but if it were in a non-lapsing account, if they allowed it, then the money would be there if we needed it.
Yes, this is not, you know, and I'm asking for feedback now, just that meetings are getting to be challenging and being that we are all together, that would be a, a valuable exercise, just to get the board's feelings on this, um, an approach to this. The Board of Finance has not approved anything. There was really a, an interest in using this, appreciating that there is a lot of uncertainty, um, right now, and that this might be a mechanism that would enable us to have funding for an extended school year, um, longer, an extended, extended school year, um, as well as any other anticipated expenses, as well as potentially, um, you know, maybe assisting in buffering a larger cut or reduction to our budget request, moving forward. So I, I think that, to Mrs. Maxicelli's point about pre-purchasing, maybe that is a discussion, if we could pull out certain maintenance projects and say that's gonna come out of '21 and maybe the funding for that would be in a lapsing account? That would be a specific, you know, um, example of how this account could be used.
So can I just ask a follow-up to that, then? Um, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. So maybe to Doreen, um, when we had spoken about this at a previous meeting, um, we had really drilled down on the idea that this was, the idea of this account was going to be for, um, emergency maintenance repairs, right? So when we were first talking about this, this would be money that we could carry over, that we could use for an average of $600,000 a year, which we seem to incur on average. Um, now, if we were to set up, um, the account now, is, is an account through the statute able to have the purpose modified in subsequent years? Or once it's formed, does it need to keep the specifics that were there when it was formed? So I, I ask, and when we're forming this, like, can we form this account now so it serves the purpose of the crisis we're in? And then down the road, when we're hopefully past this and everybody's healthy, um, can we use this fund for that original intent that we discussed at the meeting?
Um, I, I'll give you a partial answer, and then I might, um, probably might wanna weigh in on this. Um, I would think, because it's, um, ultimately gonna, I would hope be an MOU, um, that it could be set up for this year to be more, um, give us, uh, be broader latitude on how it's spent, um, because of the situation and, um, maybe just specify that it's, you know, this, for this year, this carry, this, um, carry over into an, an on-lapsing account. And then, um, in the future, if we wanted to change that, if they wanted, you know, that was their request, I'm sure we would, you know, agree to something that we could work out.
I, I wanna just add to this. I think that, uh, to echo what, um, Ms. Moncelle just said, I think that we want in this one language that's broader because, you know, we're, we're still in a process of discovery of things that, that we are gonna need help with, right? We, we haven't yet, I'm hesitant to say we've got it all figured out, um, in terms of what other additional expenses might be necessary. But I also will say that my experience has been with non-lapsing accounts that, um, you could have multiple, you can do, um, non-lapsing accounts in subsequent years that take on different needs. You know, so if you think about it, almost like, I need to, um, not stress importance on this, but almost like in a Christmas account, um, that you could, you could set it up an account, uh, next year for those unexpected maintenance projects, for example, and carry, uh, carry money into that. And I've seen districts that will use that same account in subsequent years to put additional funds in if additional funds are available. So there's a couple of different ways to approach this.
Okay.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to piggyback on what, um, Mr. Cummings was saying in terms of some flexibility, because I just wanted to be clear, um, to the Board of Finance and just for us as well, that I know that there may be a high desire to have this, like, down-to-the-penny list of what we're gonna use this money for, but just as recently as what's been happening is, there can be executive orders or provisions and new federal laws or new provisions and grants that we might wanna apply for that we don't know right now. So the reality is that on any given day, we could be told that we need to do something that we don't know that we need to do right now. Um, so I would support the concept of, yeah, being as specific as we possibly can. For example, we already know, extended school year, we might need to buy the Chromebooks. I mean, there's a million of those 2.5 that we already kind of know about at this point. Um, but looking forward, just to understand that how some of these federal laws and even the executive orders come down, it's not like we get a lot of notice, like, okay, now you're gonna have to do A, B, and C, and we didn't know that. So there is going to need to be hopefully some understanding around the need for some flexibility, um, with how this could be used.
And certainly part of that is not having a return date or not knowing when we'll be able to go back or, uh, you know, we've had the, we've had this discussion, if we're not able to do ESY, do we look at an extended school day next year as an option? So I, I think you're absolutely right that there's, the very uncertainty of coming back and what that looks like is one of the driving factors in, in, in needing this to be, um, broader in its perspective.
And I do think that, that see, some of the feedback we have gotten from the Board of Finance leadership is that they appreciate that the COVID-19 crisis is presenting new challenges and some of them we don't necessarily know what they are yet. Um, I think they were amenable to that, to give us some flexibility in dealing with those challenges that seem to be popping up for a while, or almost daily.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions about the budget in general? Okay. All right, um, seeing none, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor? That the Board of Education authorizes the Chair and/or Superintendent to request and work in collaboration with the Board of Finance to establish a non-lapsing account in accordance with Statute 285, Section 10-248A, per enclosure rate. account in accordance with statute 285, Section 10-248A for enclosure number three. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Moxley Canelli, Ms. Rotelli, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Leeper, your hand up? Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Vitale, all opposed? Abstention? Ms. Leeper?
I think she's on some kind of delay.
Yeah.
She appears that she's awake, so.
I sent, Ms. Leeper, can you hear us? Don't exactly know what you make of that.
Oh, she's back.
Jen, Leeper, are you in favor of this motion? Opposed or abstention? The public, I apologize, we seem to have some technical difficulties here, not really sure if Ms. Leeper can hear us.
I just sent her a text, she just replied, "My service is horrible, can you not see me?" So you couldn't see her, raise your hand? Mrs. Vitale?
I cannot see her, she raised her, let me see, let me see.
She, I did text her, she said she's in favor, but I mean, doesn't really probably count as a vote. You want to raise your hand?
Okay, in favor, right? Thank you, Mrs. Leeper. Motion passes eight zero. Thank you, everyone. And with that, before we adjourn, I just want to say, I hope everyone is doing well, that their families are well. If you've been personally affected by this virus, my thoughts are with you, stay safe, stay healthy. Now that we're, we're up and running, we will be meeting more frequently. And with that, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor. It is unanimous, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.